This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this meeting of the City of Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order, six o'clock PM. My name is Tony Arklevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We currently have three members here this evening for a quorum, Mary Newbauer and Brian Cafferty. Brian, are you still there? You just went out. Brian just went out there.
He's on mute here.
Okay, Brian, I'm assuming Brian is gonna, is still here. The board is, as I said, comprised of five members.
I'm here, Tony. I just have my camera turned off.
Okay, good. So I want to just make sure because we're only three of us. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. As I said, the other board members are Mary Newbauer this evening and Brian Cafferty. This will be a virtual meet. We've had several virtual meetings. Gone okay. And we're still working our way through it. Is that Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer? Can any, everyone, Mary, just mute?
I'll mute myself, yeah. We'll get some feedback.
Yeah, good. All right. And we've had a few of the virtual meetings and we've gotten through them. Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer, is at the controls. There will be a plea for public comment evening after each variance request has been presented. I have a bad habit since I'm not in front of an audience that I sometimes forget if anyone wants to make a comment. Eric and board members, remind me of that, to ask if there's anyone that wants to make a comment. Individuals are asked to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. And they must state their name and address for the record. It must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. A professional demeanor is expected. So with that being said, I ask for a motion from board member and a second to approve the minutes of March 12th, 2020. I'm told by Eric, they are on the city webpage. Was there a transcriber at that? Or that wasn't a virtual meeting, it was a transcriber? I can't hear you, Eric. Still, still not hearing you.
That was a transcribed meeting, Tony, with a stenographer.
Okay, so that's on, that's a lengthy one.
The city website, it's quite lengthy.
Anyway, so can I have a motion to approve, please? Brian or Mary?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay, Brian, I'm assuming you're second?
Yes, second.
All right. All approved. I, opposed?
I.
Through, so approve at three zero. Okay, we're, we have three items on the agenda this evening. So last, individuals that are on the agenda to unmute their microphones. The first item is owner Amy Rolnick, applicant David Wallens, 100 West Chestnut Street, Ward nine, Zone R1. The applicant is seeking an area variance from Chapter 405, Attachment two, to reduce the required rear yard setback of 30 feet, 19 feet, for the purpose of constructing a deck in the rear yard about one foot above grade. We have a letter from the owner of the property, Amy Rolnick, authorizing David Wallens to speak on her behalf. Mr. Wallens, I saw he's here.
Yes, right.
Is Ms. Rolnick here?
She's not.
Okay, so David, we, this is pretty straightforward. It's a deck, I did go past the property, I couldn't see too well in the backyard. There's a chain link fence, I believe, in the backyard. Is that the property line?
Yes.
Okay, and the deck is going to be 19 feet from the property line in the rear. What, what is the width of the deck?
Oh, boy. It's about 45 feet, I think. If you'll give me a second.
Well, not, you know, across.
Yeah.
Forty-five.
The length of the deck, or are you talking about the deck?
The width, the depth of the deck. I'm sorry.
Yeah, hold on one second.
I'm assuming if we can do some math, if it's, I don't know if it's, it's 30 feet to the property line currently for the house.
Yeah, it's a, it's about 10 and a half feet on the wall of the house towards the rear yard.
Okay, so I had a little discussion with Mr. Kitchen today because he sent me drawings, your drawings of the site plan. And I got my ruler out and I was measuring and I wasn't coming up with your, with your figures. And he told me that, as you explained to him, but the way he sent it to me, sizing it, there's a scale of, I believe, one eighth of an inch is equals one foot. And depending on the size he sends me, it's not the actual drawing. So the reason I'm bringing that up is you feel very certain that that setback will be 19 feet to the rear yard because it's very important both legally, as we pass a resolution approving that, and that's the way it will have to be built because the building inspector or Mr. Kitchen will be checking that it appears to the variance granted. So you feel secure that it's going to be 19 feet from the rear property line?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I was measuring, getting more like 13 feet, but again, it's probably because he sized, it wasn't the original drawing, it was the way he sized it and sent it to me.
Yeah, if you printed it out on the wrong sized paper, it won't be the right scale.
Yeah, okay, that's all we want to make sure. So you feel comfortable with 19 feet is what we put in the resolution for approval? Mary, do you have any questions? And Mr. Wallens?
Not, no, I took a ride to and you really can't see much from the street. And I went up and around the back. He doesn't have a lot of room up there. You know, it doesn't look as though he's got a lot of room in the back.
I'm not sure that it's a 30-foot setback right now.
Yeah.
Which is unusual in the City of Kingston, by the way, residential. So I'm not sure what the distance is from the house to the, to the back property line.
We have, we have the properties, may I help you out with that one? We had the property surveyed and at, at the corner of the house that's closest to the rear yard is just 30 feet.
Is it really? Okay, all right. Doesn't look it, but you know. Brian, do you have any questions?
No, it looked straightforward to me.
Yes, it's, it is pretty straightforward as long as we're using the 19 feet and Mr. Wallens feels comfortable with that. Do I have a motion to approve the variance request?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
A second.
A second. One second. Tony, wait, we have four callers on the line.
Okay, I'm, well, thank you, thank you for taking my word. Does anyone have any comment on this, on this particular application on 100 West Chestnut Street? Thank you, Eric, for reminding me. Okay, we have motion to approve. Mary, second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Wallens, you have the approval for the, for the deck and the 19-foot area setback in the rear.
Mr. Wallens, thanks for the detailed plan.
Yes, you're quite welcome. Thank you very much. I appreciate being first on the agenda.
Where are you calling from? Brooklyn?
Brooklyn, yeah.
I thought so. All right. That's where your address was on here. Okay, well, how are things in Brooklyn? Okay?
Better than they were a couple of months ago, that's for sure.
That's, that is true, I'm sure. Okay, thank you. You can turn your mic off.
I'm going to leave the meeting if that's okay at this point.
You're all approved, three zero, ready to go.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Svensson, I'm assuming I saw your name on the letterhead, I believe. You're here. Mr. Raplansky isn't here?
That's correct.
You're representing. Okay, board members were on the second agenda item. The Law Office of Warren Raplansky on behalf of Richard Kavanaugh and Linda Groom requests the ZBA to reconsider and/or clarify its May 14th, 2020 decision to include a clear condition that the second story of the addition may only be used for storage. I'm assuming Dan is on the line, Dan Gartenstein? I don't see DG. What?
One second, Tony. Maybe one of these callers is hit, is him? I don't know.
Well, he would hear us, right?
I'm unmuting them. Dan? Dan, are you there?
Tony, this is Mike Moriello, um, two.
Oh, okay, how you doing? Well, you're on number three, Mike, all right?
Yeah, I'm on number three, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, Dan isn't here. If we need him, we'll have to call him, but he's not here. Okay, going back to the agenda item, I read the, what's written on the agenda. I do want to put into the record a letter from the Law Office of Warren Raplansky, June 26th, 2020, addressed to me as chairman. And also another letter from Mr. Raplansky dated June 23rd, 2020, to Eric Kitchen, zoning officer. The board has issued those letters. Steve, okay, we're getting some feedback. I'm going to summarize the letter. The request is to reconsider or clarify the decision that the board made regarding area variance for Mr. and Mrs. Akins on 87 Lincoln Street. In order to construct a garage, it was an area variance from a setback. The letter is asking us to include a clear condition that the second story of the addition may only be used for storage. The letter goes on to say that statements were made suggesting the second story should only be used for storage and that some additional review and approval would be required for any other use. That, that is correct. I went back and reviewed the video of the meeting and that was me giving about a five-minute sermon on if the upper floor of the garage was to be used for anything but storage, the Akins would have to return back to building safety and apply for a variance to the zoning board and that, that was the required use. But Mr. Raplansky feels, however, it was not clear whether the conclusion was for a condition to be placed on the variance. I do want to point out that the legal document that's filled out by me and kept on file is called the Findings of Fact. The Findings of Fact had motion to approve an area variance, which is verified by me looking at the tape, video of the meeting, to 17 inches from the east side of the property line for the construction of a two-story garage, second story to be used for storage. I'm inclined to move ahead with this motion to clarify, but I'm certainly not of the inkling to reconsider it. Ms. Svensson, did I, in some substance, accurately describe the letter from Mr. Raplansky as to this matter this evening? Is there anything that I left out?
Yeah, no, that's correct. And as, you know, as you said, Mr. Chairman, it did certainly seem as if the intention of the board was for the second story to only be used for storage, but without it being clearly placed as a condition on the variance, we were unsure whether, you know, if that were to change in the future, whether the applicant would need to go back to the ZBA and ask for a new variance, which is important to my clients, that that would come back to the ZBA and have a new public hearing, so.
The Findings of Fact clearly stated that the second story had to be used for storage. And now the motion may not have been as clear, but as long as in substance, substance, some in substance that is accurate in your letter, I'm willing to offer this particular motion if this will clear up the matter and get us off the mark on this issue. Okay, all right, board members, I move to amend a prior resolution dated May 14th, 2020, which granted a use variance from the City of Kingston Code, Section 405, for the owners of 87 Lincoln Street, Kingston, New York, for the construction of a two-story garage to further provide that the variance is approved, conditioned on the second story of said garage being used exclusively for the purpose of storage, without prejudice to the rights of the owner to move by application to the zoning board of appeals for a further variance in accordance with the provisions of the City of Kingston Code. I trust that definitively puts the conditions on the situation here and we can put this to rest, hopefully?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Please, Mary?
I'll motion, I'll motion to approve.
Brian, do you second?
Yes.
Uh, Chairman? Mr. Chairman? We, we have some callers on the line.
I'm gonna get the motion and that, and then I'm gonna have the caller speak, okay? Thank you, keep reminding me.
All right.
I have a motion from Mary, spoken from Brian. Any, any further discussion? Do we have any callers that want to speak on this issue of 87 Lincoln Street? With that being said, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Akins, nothing has changed in terms of your approval for your variance, other than now it clearly states in the motion the conditions to the construction of the garage in terms of what the use of the second story must be and if anything changes, a return to the zoning board and building safety in the event that is changing, okay? I just want to make clear, nothing has changed on the original approval, all right? Mr. and Mrs. Akins?
Yes, I understand that. I, it was, it was clear the first time. Thank you.
Okay, well, now it's more clear, all right? Right?
Yep, any, yep.
Now it's, now it's very clear, right, Ms. Svensson? Okay, all right, moving along. Thank you, all the parties. I'm gonna move along to the third item. Oh, we've got, it's actually old business because we heard a presentation on this proposal several months ago. I do want to make one correction to the wording. We're going to now address 127 Green Hill Avenue, is that correct, the address? Scott and Peter, 127 Green Hill Avenue. The applicant is seeking a use variance, it should be Chapter 405, not 404, dash 12, to use the current building and lands for a community center for the City of Kingston. And we had a presentation several months ago on what sounded like a...
That was my question.
What's that? On the exciting new program and we have Mr. Moriello here and we have Mr. Dutton and we have Mr. Buffett here. And I saw Ms. Metzger, she's here, right? There she is. And I think that's everybody there you said that was going to be present. What I'd like to do, this is going to be going into new territory. I've been on the board over 10 years and this will be the first time that we will actually be approaching a variance request using a section of code that is there as kind of a release valve, escape valve. And I want to hear from Mr. Moriello a little more about utilizing that section of the zoning in order to have a variance, a use variance granted. But I also want to hear from Mr. Dutton and Mr. Buffett on the, or Ms. Metzger on the proposal itself for the, what we would call, it's, it's, the building's been purchased by the Novo Foundation, Peter Buffett. And it's going to, the house that's currently on the property will be repurposed as a community house project for neighborhood support in a home environment in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club. And they will be, there will be various programs for youth age 17 to, I think, early twenties regarding life skills, et cetera. So why don't we do the program first, whoever wants to speak, and just briefly go through what the, what the program is going to entail at, at this house that's going to be repurposed? And then we can hear from Mr. Moriello for the argument for, legal arguments for invoking the special clause for area var, uh, use variance. Mr. Dutton, are you gonna make the presentation?
I am not. I think Peter is the best person to do that, but I want to remind Eric that Mike Moriello is caller number two.
Oh, he's caller number two, okay. Mike's, are you still there, Mike?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, Tony. Caller number two.
Oh, okay, it's got caller number two up in the corner, but then I see a picture of you at the corner to it.
That's because, that's because I'm a fumble nut and can't figure out how to get the sound on this gizmo.
We've got you.
I'm using two different technology platforms.
Got you loud and clear, but I didn't recognize you with the, with the goatee there, but.
Yeah, I was trying for that Don Johnson look for a little while, but it went a little too far and now it's like a cross between El Capo and, and Pancho Villa.
Hey, Mike, you wear that Luddite, that Luddite thing pretty well.
Here's Mohawk. You know who my partner is? Buckshot.
Mr. Buffett, would you like to give us a little brief outline as to what you have planned for this house?
Sure, and I'm not sure how much we talked about it in the earlier meeting, so I'm not gonna, I, you can ask me any questions you want as we go through it, but it really is in relationship with the Boys and Girls Club. Quite honestly, Dan Williams is going to be telling us the kinds of things he wants to see in there as, you know, as it, his needs grow and are met by this. So I've been in a lot of conversations with Dan about what kind of rooms he'd like to see, what kind of gathering spaces, imagining different groups of kids in there. Again, like you said, learning life skills and also having a good time, I'm sure, in terms of being able to gather in a place. Hopefully, they'll be able to do that sooner than later. But it really is 100% in conjunction with Dan and the Boys and Girls Club. So for me to say specifically, you know, I'm not as, as well-versed on that, but I can tell you that it's exactly that age range from 17, 18, you know, as an age out of the club, they can have a place to go and kind of get on whatever life path they may be interested in or help they may want with, you know, financial literacy and all sorts of different things, so, yeah.
And there will be speakers, as I understand it, speakers that'll be brought in, there'll be counselors brought in. Will there be a full-time staff member onsite or will be day-to-day who is supervising?
It'll be day-to-day. It'll be small groups as well, just to say, there, there's not, you know, that, that's, I think it'll, again, kind of reflect the neighborhood in the sense that there won't be large groups ever there. But, you know, there, there's gonna be five kids or eight kids or something at different times. But, yeah, he, yeah, there, there will be some, I would say, speakers in the sense of more like counselors and, and people guiding, you know, giving some input into what the kids can do.
Okay, so that, my point was, there's not gonna be a, a full-time administrator or supervisor that is living in the house?
Not living in the house, no, correct.
It sounds very innovative, but I don't, I know of no other similar program house where a house has been repurposed for like this, so I think it is exceptional, it is unique. Mary, do you have any questions of Buffett?
Well, basically, there's gonna be someone there supervising, not, not living there, but when these young people are there, access, have access to the building, you're gonna have someone there to supervise to make sure that everything goes the way, appropriately in the way it's supposed to.
Absolutely, and that's part of the, the relationship with the Boys and Girls Club, is we'll make sure that, just like they always have supervision, we will definitely always have supervision, yeah.
And what will the hours be?
Well, that's a good question. Actually, I, I would talk to Dan about that because I'm not sure what club hours are going to be historically. And Scott, you may know the answer to this in terms of club hours, but we would most likely follow those hours, probably across the board, weekends, that kind of thing. We'd probably follow them very closely.
So you're gonna follow their schedule basically, when they're open, the same hours?
Yeah, no, I can't guarantee that, but that's the plan, is that we would, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And Scott, you may have more information about that, yeah.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to share with you all a very powerful response that I had personally as a resident of Midtown Kingston after having had the opportunity to talk to Dan and also Cheryl Bowers, who is president of the Boys and Girls Club Board, about this unique opportunity that the Novo Foundation has created for this community. And the vision, as it was explained to me, was that these kids, at this fragile time of just coming out of high school, just coming out of having that support network in those very first couple of years, have an opportunity to be partnered with business people like myself, like people from the bank, insurance industry, the trades, and give them the confidence and the tools that they need to interview for a job. You know, what, what does that mean to go for your first job interview? If you don't have the parental support there or that experience isn't there, then you've never been taught that, that, but that doesn't mean that you're not a great candidate for, to fill a position that the bank needs, that the insurance company needs, that the architect needs, that the, you name it. And so it resonated for me, I'm getting goosebumps just thinking about Dan and Cheryl Bowers talking about it. And I think the synergy between the Boys and Girls And I think the synergy between the Boys and Girls Club, the opportunity to, to have a place where people from this community at that age, and I have two teenage daughters that are in that age group, can come and get a class, if you will. It might just be a one-hour class, a two-hour class, and, and be partnered up with a career path or learn how to fill out a college application or just a job application is, is just incredibly powerful.
Well, I think it's important with the, the age groups also as a former educator, retired educator. These are the years where they're not getting that, going to be getting that support from the school, from the high school guidance counselor or teacher. You know, they've graduated, they've gotten their GED and they're, they don't have the support base of the school and they'll have it here. Now, I'm sorry, I must have been talking, but Dan is the director of the Boys Club, I take it? Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, man.
Question that you just, you just hit on, are these, are you going to give these, these young adults help with getting through school, graduating, maybe the GED? Is that going to be part of your program or no?
Yeah. I mean, again, we want to respond, and thank you, Scott, for such a beautiful description really, because we want to respond to what the kids need, right? And I, and I would absolutely assume that some kids are going to need some support there, and so we would want to provide that. And, I mean, that's sort of our MO in general is that we want to create the container for something that we know the community needs, in this case, the Boys and Girls Club, and then let the, the kids' needs really fill it and the community needs and the families need. So, so yes, that's the long answer to say, I'm sure we will.
Okay.
Brian, do you have any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. I, the, the programming's fantastic. I mean, who's arguing, no one's arguing that.
Right.
Really, not even, I mean, something that's really of debate, the question is, is whether or not the, whether or not the property, you know, it makes sense where it is and the use and all that, you know, I, I, I see literally no problem with, with this application. I mean, the building is right next to the Boys and Girls Club.
Exactly.
It's on a street where there's mixed-use buildings. It's nice to hear all these wonderful things about what's going to happen there and I'm thrilled about it. But, yeah, I mean, this has my support in that the use for the location and the space is perfect. So it works. So.
Thank you, Brian. We're going to let Mr. Moriello earn his keep though, a little bit, okay?
Really? To hear Mike?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, actually, I, I have to compliment him. You're going to get no brownie points on this, Mr. Moriello, but your treatise, legal explanation for this use variance is excellent. In fact, the part for the reasonable return of financial hardship, I, I think I'd like to, if it's not copyrighted, I'd like to publish it like, kind of like a little booklet to hand out to individuals coming for a use variance and, and not really understanding the financial hardship clause or the reasonable return. I would like you to just briefly, if you would, we're going to, we're going to, if we, board grants this use variance, it's going to be used in accordance with 405-55.1 of, not used very often, in fact, in ten years, this is the first time. But it's, it's for exceptional and extraordinary circumstances where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of counting out strict letter of use variance. And if you could just briefly go over that, Mr. Mori, for the purpose of the board, anybody who's listening, appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, not a
Getting any better.
That's not a problem. I want to thank the board for, for having us too, and I also want to thank Peter and Cassandra because this, this really is a unique opportunity in the city. When Peter and Cassandra first came to me and said, oh, we want to buy the DuBois House and we're going to fix it up and we're going to use it, you know, for a mentoring program and a charitable purpose here in the city. I said, that, that's great. We took a look at the zoning and it wasn't as great. So we took a look at the use variance criteria under the zoning and spoke to Dan Gartenstein. I, I gave Dan a call and Dan said, look, we have a provision in our, in our law that provides for a public interest task that is defined there, I think, which this clearly fits into. I mean, normally, and the board is definitely aware of this, lack of reasonable return is usually the biggest hurdle for an applicant to climb and, in getting a use variance. And you usually go in and say, we can't make any money, we, you know, we, this place has been losing money forever. There's no way we can use it and make any kind of reasonable return. We have dollars and cents proof of injury. We've tried to, the person tried to sell it for five years and it couldn't be sold. Well, ours is almost the exact opposite of that. We came in and Peter bought, bought the place, knowing he was going to get no return. He never, he never wanted a reasonable return. So it kind of flips that script over. But I think that this public interest portion of the law allows for a unique situation like this to work to the advantage of the city because all, all of the criteria, all the other four criteria all fit this, this use variance pattern. And of course, the lack of reasonable return is endemic to the project itself. So it's almost, it's almost like you're coming to the, to the project with a lack of unreasonable return that, that is self-evident and to some degree self-imposed. So we're not asking for a hardship relief, you know, self, self-imposed hardship under the zoning law is always one factor to consider, and it's not dispositive to a, a decision on, on the grant of the variance. It's part of the balancing test. So in our case, you know, this was a conscious decision that was made to not get a reasonable return, which I believe fits into this public interest analysis and the statute itself. Now, we cited, cited some case law, we've, we've worked through also the issue of prior precedent, which I know the ZBA is probably, is always concerned with, with, with variances. And the board, a zoning board of appeals is only bound by prior precedent on essentially the same facts. Meaning that unless somebody else comes along and does what Peter did, this is never going to present itself again. So, I mean, I think when you look at it in terms of what Scott was saying with the mentoring and kind of a, it's a transformational program that's going to be at a critical, critical time for, for young people. I think it, it really does fit this unique circumstance or unique set of facts and public interest test quite nicely.
Exactly. And it's an interesting term that you don't hear very often, self-imposed loss. Basically, that's what is a self-imposed loss. You notice the property own that you were not going to seek a reasonable return. And the, the whole gist of forty-five point, fifty-five point one is the project will lose money by creating a public benefit for the city. And I think those are two critical pieces of this use variance and utilizing exceptional, extraordinary circumstances. I only, I only found one error in your treatise there, Mr. Moriello, on page one where you say the application is set forth within the two feltings at state and since in 405-11 of the city of Kingston zoning. Well, it's actually 405-12. An R2 difference. So, other than that, you get an A on your, your legal work. So, anyway. That's, that's the gist of this. The, we've heard board the program and we've heard the basis of granting the use variance and the motion to grant this variance. Mary, if you have any other further questions?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Brian?
Tony, we still have, though, we have a couple of steps with this variance. We, because it's a use variance and it's near the public park and the roadway network that it's next to, this does have to go to Dennis Doyle at the county. We have, under seeker, we have an unlisted action under seeker. So it's, it did not fit into, Scott and I looked into, looking, looked into fitting it into a type-two action, which customarily, if you have a 4,000 square foot or less build portion would fit into type-two, but that does not apply to use variances. So we couldn't avail ourselves of that. So it is an unlisted action which would require going through the part two of the seeker, and we do need a referral to the county planning board.
Now, you'll be going, you'll be going to the planning board for you, Mike. What's that, Eric? I, I will submit, I'll submit that for you, the, the referral. Can you just call me tomorrow? Can you just? The only legal
What number do you want me to get you at, Eric?
Who better? Uh, 331? 1217?
Okay.
Nine o'clock, after nine.
Okay.
Well, I have two, two things I want to do. One, don't let me forget, I want to ask the callers if they have comments on this use variance. The second is unfortunately, Dan's not here for me to ask him. Can we approve this variance this evening before it goes to Ulster County Planning Board? I'm not sure of the sequence there.
I can answer that for you. You, you can't. It's, the requirement to refer to the Ulster County Planning Board is jurisdictional. So if you, yeah, if you acted ahead of that, it would, the action would be void. So.
I thought that, that, it's happened a few times. What it is, it's near a highway, a county or state highway, and that triggers the referral. And it's the public park aspect of it too. Varmen, Varmen Park, Cross Street. Go ahead, Scott, or something.
This is a question from Mike Moriello. Mike, are they allowed to close the public hearing evening?
Um, well, I mean, I think if there's no public comments, I, I wouldn't think it's a problem to close a public hearing. I don't, I don't imagine, I don't, and we can ask if there's any public comments. If it, if not, then I, I do
I'll see if it closes the public hearing aspect of it, if there aren't any, if we get the comments on record. But we can't, I didn't think we could vote if we had to submit it to the to the Ulster County Planning Board. Callers, do we have any callers to speak on this issue? Caller one, two, three, where we have four. And Mike, you're one of them. You're two, right? So, three, okay. So we have none. At this point, then, we're not going to be able to vote on this. I, the consensus of the board.
Tony, why do, why do we have to refer to the Ulster County Planning Board?
Well, it's in proximity to a public park and also to a county-state highway. I'm not sure exactly what state.
It's under, it's under 230, 239M of the general municipal law requires that referral for a use variance if those, that proximity is present. So it's just, it's required.
I'm just not sure what state or county road it is.
State or county? What are we talking about? It's
Isn't that county? Route 32?
Yeah. It's got to be 32.
Yeah, it's 32.
Also the public park.
Yeah. My, my question is this, I understood the law to be within 500 feet.
Correct.
Well, it's Is the park, 32 would not be within 500 feet?
If Greenkill Avenue is Route 32.
Right.
Okay.
Right on it.
I was thinking of both, I'm sorry.
Not that part of it.
What's that?
Not that part of it. It is not. 32 comes in Greenkill and it turns onto Clinton and then it goes on to
But is it five, is it within 500? Yes, Scott.
Rupco recently transferred the baseball field to the city as well.
Yeah, that's, that is correct. I, I represented Rupco in that transaction and that's
Could be within 500 feet. So it triggers the referral to the county. Okay. Well, I think you heard the general consensus of the board, we're not going to vote, but I wish Dan, Dan could be here and, and give us his opinion on this, but we have the applicants feel pretty secure and they want to do things the correct way and not have something
Well, Tony, can we, we, could we vote pending, you know, pending the determination of the county? Because I know what the county's going to say. They're not, they're not, there's, they're going to have little to, nothing to say about this, is my anticipation, but.
All right. I'm going to defer to the comfort level of counsel for this particular project. Moriello, I do not have a problem passing a contingent on subject to the approval of Ulster County, but I'm not going to put you in, in, in your program.
I mean, the board can indicate its disposition, but it really should not, it should not vote until it, it has the input from the county to be, be technically correct.
All right. I'm not going to do anything that's not at the level of the applicant. So, little different situation. Usually applicants put this the other way, so I appreciate and respect your comments, so.
Well, we know Mike, Mike is a paragon of virtue here, so we
I heard him describe that's a new one, but I'm, I'm not debating that that's not true. But I think you've got the general consensus of the board that we're supportive of this and fulfill all the requirements and then bring it back to, back to us. But it sounds like a wonderful program and thank you, Mr. Buffett, for your work on
Do you want to vote to close the public hearing though? You, right, you're going to vote to close the public?
I'll have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mary, second. All in favor, three?
Aye.
Close public hearing. All right. We'll see you, what does that song go? See you in September or?
Yeah.
Mr. Buffett knows it. I mean, myself, nobody reckon, the young guys, nobody recognized that song, See You. Very right.
I recognize it, yeah.
Okay.
Want to admit it, but I recognize it too.
Young guys. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I motion to adjourn.
Mary?
Thank you all.
Brian?
Second.
Thank you. Adjourn. At 6:52. Okay. Brian, I just want to tell you while I still have you on here, I'd really appreciate your dedication to showing up for these meetings. Hope once we get out of this virus, we're going to start having more active participation from the board, but thank, and thank you, Mary, for your, for your dedication and thank you, everybody. And I think we've covered everything, right, Eric? All the items? I'll bring down the
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Night. All right. I'll bring down the signature sheets tomorrow, Eric, all right? All right. I can't hear you. Your mic's sore. I'm sorry. I muted myself, but, yeah. All right. I'll bring down the signature sheets tomorrow. Thanks, Mike. Mike? Mike? I don't know. Hear you. Mike, can you hear, Eric? Call Eric. Okay.
All right, Tony.
Take us off, thank you.
All right, Tony.
Thanks, Eric.
Have a good night, Tony. Thank you.
You too.
Okay, cancel, no.